We now come to Article 19. Article 19 asks the following question: Will the town appropriate the sum of $772,000, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, to be used by the Hingham Historical Society to help purchase the Lincoln House located at 181 North Street in order to repurpose that property as a museum? Now this goes on for some pages. At page 49, following on to 50, you see the approval of the article requires two-thirds vote of town meeting. Now this is because it would involve borrowing, hence two-thirds majority required. You see there that the advisory committee voted 9-0 to 1, Community Preservation Committee 8-0 to 1 in support of the article. And let's look at the recommended motion. The recommended motion is set forth at page 50 and reads with some abstraction as follows: That the town appropriate an amount not to exceed $772,000, as recommended by CPC, to be used by the Historical Society to help purchase the Benjamin Lincoln House at 181 North Street in order to repurpose the property as a museum, open to the public, and in order to meet appropriation, to do two things: to expend $32,000 -- or three things -- $32,713 from the Community Preservation Historic Preservation Reserve, $243,956 from the Community Preservation General Fund, and authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the select board to borrow $495,331. And in order to carry out the purposes of the vote, the selectmen and the Community Preservation Committee will be authorized to enter into a grant or are authorized to enter into a grant agreement with the Hingham Historical Society. So that is the recommended motion before the meeting on this CPC standalone article, Article 19. Is there discussion? Number six. I feel like I'm in the food store or something. Now serving number six? Now serving number six? Is it on?
Okay. Tom Patch, Ship Street. I have a couple of questions, how this is going to play out in light of the actual recommended vote and the advisory committee comment, and what we did with Old Derby. If people remember, basically, we appropriated quite a bit of money. We borrowed money for the expansion of the Old Derby. As part of that, CPC money, as part of that, there was a restriction required to be put on record. What Hingham Historical Society did is they went to a bank, borrowed a bunch of money, almost a million dollars. Subsequent to that, the restriction went on, but the restriction was never subordinated -- I should say, the mortgage was never subordinated to the restriction of record. And I can tell you that because I'm an attorney and I examine the record title. I don't know if that was an oversight, but it should be corrected because when your restriction is not subordinated to the mortgage, if they foreclose on the mortgage, the restriction gets wiped out. So in getting to this property, this property is subject to extensive existing restriction through -- with Historic New England that you can go on record, it's over 100 pages of pictures and so forth of record restricting what can be done with this property. So the likelihood that this property is going to fall into private hands and be torn down and McMansionized is, I would say, in my opinion, nil. So what we're doing is we're buying a property, and again, the Historical Society has come to the town to ask not just current funds but borrowing, which puts a restriction on our further ability in the future to use CPC funds or CPA funds for other things. One of the things I'm concerned about here is to talk about the grant agreement, and it's my understanding Massachusetts DOR requires, if not, or at least recommends, a grant agreement because there's something called the anti-Aide Amendment to the Massachusetts Constitution, which doesn't allow taxpayer money to be handed over to private organizations. So they get around that with this grant agreement. My concern first is the grant agreement, there's no reference to the grant agreement in the recommended motion. My second concern is they are talking about, and it's on page 49, top paragraph, I think it's the last sentence, saying that "In the unlikely event the Society were to decide to sell the property, the town would grant a right of first refusal reimbursement to the town for money spent." So given the precedent that the Historical Society has done with Old Derby by putting a mortgage on the property, the question I have is, are we precluding them from putting a mortgage on the property? Because again, you know, we are looking at a situation where we're being asked to give them quite a bit of money ostensibly to purchase this property, and they were going to come up with their own money. And I just would hate to see it, their share of the funds come through a mortgage that is at a higher priority than the money that the town is going to give them. If anything, the town should always come first in this. The town should be paid first. And so I would like someone to respond to that. And the second question I have for the selectmen is, on the bottom of page 49, last paragraph, it talks about, you know, there's going to be this grant agreement. And the question I have is whether or not this grant agreement has in fact been negotiated or at least is in substantial form that we today will know more specifics about what is going to be in this grant agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Patch. I'd ask Susan Murphy to speak to the legal issues that have been raised and draw your attention, as Ms. Murphy comes forward, to the language at the recommended motion at the end of the first paragraph, which I believe is to some extent the subject and part of Mr. Patch's observation, that in order to carry out the purposes of this vote, the Board of Selectmen and the CPC are authorized to enter into a grant agreement with the Hingham Historical Society. Susan Murphy, Special Counsel for the Community on Real Estate Issues.
Hello, my name is Susan Murphy. I live at 11 Daly Road in Hingham. So with respect to the acquisition of this property, there will be a grant agreement as it was discussed. In connection with the terms of the grant agreement, there were a number of terms that would -- to go into the grant agreement that were discussed and recommended at the CPC level. They were discussed when the Board of Selectmen were reviewing these articles, and I believe as well as when advisory committee. That has not yet been drafted because it was premature to spend, invest the time for the town to negotiate that prior to having an affirmative vote of the town meeting, but no money will be dispersed under the article, as I understand, unless and until there is an agreement in place that addresses all of the legal issues that would protect the town's investment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Yes. Come to microphone two, please.
Vicki Diamond, 12 Florette Circle Liaison, CPC Liaison to the Benjamin Lincoln House. And I just want to speak to how CPC saw this, as the liaison, taking a look at this home that's been in family hands for 350 years, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for the town of Hingham to do what we do well, and that's preserve history. We spend a lot of time, not only with the folks at the Historical Society, but with our own Historic Commission. And this is going to be a partnership. Grant agreements, for those of you who don't understand, the grant agreements are written after it's approved here at town meeting. So the grant agreement has been in the works due to the fact that this is a little bit different. But I am excited to say that the Historical Society has done amazing fundraising, and we have raised $1.3 million in order to make the rest of the payment for the home and take care of the endowment, which was a promise they made. And during the current circumstance, the fact that they are volunteering tells me that this town is not just 100% behind it, but has great passion to make sure that this historical treasure is saved here for the rest of town and for others to enjoy. So our children will be able to be educated here, will all have the opportunity to see this marvelous.
Please.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Is there further discussion? If not, we come to vote on the recommendation. Where am I looking at? Okay. Yep.
Hi. Elizabeth Molds at 70 Winter Street, and I just had a few questions.
Sure.
It's my understanding CPC funds are also those allocated to affordable housing and, like, open recreational space. Are the Affordable Housing Funds, is this the only Affordable Housing Fund available to Hingham?
Who is able to address that question authoritatively? It is not your moderator. Must be someone out there. Tim White out there, or someone? Karen Johnson?
Karen Johnson for the Board of Selectmen. I'd say a couple of things. One, we are, and I think somebody pointed out earlier, we are one of the, we're one of the first communities in the Commonwealth to adopt an Affordable Housing Trust and to continue to fund it on an annual basis. So the Opportunity Fund grant that you voted earlier from the CPC adds to the treasury of the Affordable Housing Trust. Affordable Housing Trust will go out and buy houses, rehab them, put an affordable restriction on them, and then use those proceeds to do it all over again. That, in addition to the fact, and I think I noted this in the report of the Board of Selectmen to the meeting, that the town has been, has been, is eligible for the Housing Choice Program, so it's eligible for state fundings in addition to town funding for affordable housing.
Thank you. Let me make one observation which may assist the meeting today and in the future, with respect to the Community Preservation Act and recommendations that come before the meeting from the Community Preservation Committee, which the CPC and the CPA legislation gives the CPC certain authority and in one sense also limits the authority of the legislative body that is town meeting. And I will read to you just one very brief section from the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, that speaks to this issue, and it says the following: "The legislative body, we at town meeting, may not increase any recommended appropriation from CPC, and it may not change the funding source recommendation of CPC." So I just bring that to your attention because it's not something I think that is, you would intuit to, and sometimes end realize questions that may seek to reallocate CPC funds that only CPC itself can do. Yes, please come to the microphone right in front. I'm sorry, I'm totally sorry. You can stay by this mic, that's fine for me. You go ahead with mic two.
Megan Bier, from 489 Main Street, and I just wanted to say that in addition to the Affordable Housing Trust, there's also the Housing Authority. Both of our groups can go to the CPC and ask for funds to help for affordable housing, but it's up for us, it's up to us to ask for those funds. We did not this year, the Affordable Housing Trust did. My understanding is that this would not be taking away any money for affordable housing initiatives in Hingham. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bier. Ms. Baggar.
Thank you. Paula Baggar, 48 Old County Road, and I'm the President of the Hingham Historical Society. Just wanted to make two quick points, one of which is that Mr. Patch is correct, there are restrictive easements on the property that would protect it from being torn down. But the goal of the Hingham Historical Society is to purchase the house so that they can interpret it and make it, keep it open to the public, make it accessible to the citizens of Hingham, which would not happen if it were sold to another private owner. And I just want to comment that we have been exceptional stewards of the properties that we have been entrusted with since 1914, including in particular Old Derby Academy, for which we were blessed with a grant from the CPC in, I think it was 2013. And we have made good on our undertaking to the town with that. I'd say 2,500 people came to our properties last year, whether for school tours, exhibits, programs, or other activities that we had invited them to. And we can, you know, we will continue to work to keep our properties, including the Benjamin Lincoln House, accessible, interpreted, and to work and continue our partnership with the Hingham Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion?
My name is Al Chambers. I'm on the Affordable Housing Trust. Someone asked questions about our funding, and yes, we are sacrificing dollars on this, and we do so gladly. It's just another great, great historic property that should be acquired. To not do so is to put, take out a front tooth on Hingham's beautiful historic township. So yes, we're not getting the amount of funding we'd like. We all work hard, and it is very difficult to buy houses in Hingham right now for affordable housing because of the average cost of housing. However, the committee is under strong directorship, and we're doing fine. We're at the limits we need, and we'll continue to improve. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further questions or discussion, a voter who wishes to be recognized? If not, we come to the recommended motion under Article 19. It requires for adoption a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of the recommendation of the advisory committee under Article 19, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Clearly more than two-thirds have voted in favor of the recommendation. It is passed. We move to Article 20. Please, no applause. Thank you. Article 20 asks, "Will the town accept the provisions of Chapter 32 so as to increase the maximum based on the cost of living adjustments to $14,000?" This comes to us at the request of the Hingham Retirement Board. There's unanimous support in favor of this. The motion is at page 51. Is there discussion? Hearing none, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's unanimous vote. Article 21, "Will the town vote to alter the composition of the citizen advisory board as was established last year by increasing the number of members of that board from five to six and increasing the number of members nominated by the Town of Halls Board of Selectmen from one to two?" This receives the unanimous support of the advisory committee and the Board of Selectmen and the straightforward recommendation which follows precisely the text of the article is set forth at page 51. Is there discussion? A bird wishes to be recognized. Hearing none, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's unanimous vote. Article 22. Article 22 asks, "Will the town accept the provisions of the applicable Massachusetts law which would allow the town to add unpaid water charges to the real estate tax owed, when those charges would be subject to the same interest rates and collection procedures as the taxes to which they are added?" So this would allow unpaid water charges to be added to unpaid taxes with interest and ensure that they are paid. The advisory committee and the Board of Selectmen voted unanimously in support of the article. There's a very short recommendation at page 52. Is there discussion on that? If not, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes are in the majority, and the vote carries. Article 23 asks, "Will the town, if we will, to raise appropriate borrower transfer from available funds in amount not to exceed $2.7 million to pay costs of designing, engineering, constructing, reconstructing, repairing, and improving the Weir River water system, including the payment of all costs incidentally related thereto, or act on anything related thereto?" This, of course, is the water system, the water company that we discussed somewhat last year at town meeting. And no funds to be expended, and you'll see right at the head of the comment, no funds to be expended until the town has completed the purchase of the water company from Aquarian of Massachusetts, as approved, rather, by the vote of last year's meeting. You see that the town intends to borrow the money to fund this investment, but the debt service will have no impact on the taxpayers or the town's budget per se, as it will be repaid by water ratepayers through the Water Company Enterprise Fund. Because this does require borrowing, it requires for adoption a two-thirds vote of the meeting. It comes to you with the unanimous recommendation of the advisory committee and the Board. Is there discussion on the recommended motion under Article 23? Hearing none, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's unanimous vote. Article 24 asks, "Will the town raise an appropriate borrower transfer from available funds? A sum of money to be expended by the Board of Selectmen to fund an independent review of existing municipal and school facilities, which would include an analysis of space and service demands and deficiencies, and provide a summary report detailing findings and providing options, or act on anything related thereto?" You have your comment, which more or less explains the position of advisory, that this will serve as an important step to creating a long-term financial plan for the town and establishing long-term priorities. The recommended motion is at the base of, well, in my book, it's in the base of 53, and it says that the town appropriate from available reserves an amount not in excess of $300,000 for the purpose of funding an independent review of existing municipal and school facilities, as more particularly stated in the recommended motion. Is there discussion on the recommendation under the question posed by Article 24?
Yes.
So there is. Could that citizen come to a microphone?
Already here.
Number eight.
It's eight.
Yes.
Good afternoon. Anita Papucci Ryan, 37 Baker Hill Drive. I just had a question, which I actually had asked previously, that I don't think was addressed, and I'm just trying to understand. There are three feasibility studies, all relating to buildings, and that are being used and paid by tapping into our rainy day fund, and I'm trying to understand Article 24, which is described as the first step to make better use of existing buildings, and yet we had two prior articles that also relate to capital projects and building use, and I'm trying to put the three articles all in context and understand, could we be more efficient with our dollars in combining some of these various plans? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, do you want to speak to that, or, no, Ms. Straley?
Good afternoon. Julie Straley, 231 Lovett Street, speaking for advisory. This article asks for a study, it's an independent study of space needs for municipal and school buildings in town, on the use and the services coming out of them. It's important to understand how the town is using the existing space before committing to any future capital projects. An additional advantage of this study would be to identify some space that could be quickly configured in order to help a program in need, therefore avoiding a long wait for a long-term capital project. An example of that is that there's a high school program called Traces that was run out of one of the buildings in Bear Cove Park that's owned by the school department, and there was a problem with that building this winter, and the program could no longer use that building. And so there was a scramble to find placement for the equipment and for these students. And they eventually found space that was okay, but it's just an example that if we had a better handle on some of the existing spaces, that we could not have held up that program long and moved them into another appropriate space for them to continue their program. This plan fits into the master plan that the town has been undertaking this past year. It's a master plan study of the entire town. That master plan is at a higher level, looking across all aspects of life in the town, and this facility study would be a specific lower level of planning, more detail. The town of Needham recently did a, in recent years, did a facility study, like the one that you're being asked to approve, and the town of Hingham identified that projects, or the buildings that would be looked into for the analysis are the former Tree and Park Barn at 8 Short Street, the former Hingham Municipal Lighting Plant Building at 308 Cushing Street, various buildings in Bear Cove Park, the Bathing Beach Bath House, the DPW, the fire stations, GAR Hall, the Harbor Master Space at the shipyard, the library, the Lynchfield House, the old DPW barn, Recreation Barn, the schools, the School Depot, Stashor Country Club, Town Hall, and Water Treatment Plant. So the town owns a lot of buildings, and this facility study will allow the town to get a better handle on what we have and to avoid future projects, or at least have a better understanding of how to go forward if there's other future needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Straley. Is there additional discussion?
Thank you. Anita Papucci Ryan, 37 Baker Hill Drive, and thank you for your comments, and I appreciate them. I guess what I'm still trying to understand is, while there are three separate studies, each causing hundreds of thousands of dollars, that all relate to use of our buildings, isn't it more efficient, from a financial stewardship perspective, to have this plan cover all the building needs of the town?
Thank you. Why don't you, Ms. Johnson, if you would come forward and speak to the issue? Why can't one committee do it all?
You'd think that would be the answer, right? Karen Johnson for the Board of Selectmen. So the study committee with respect to the public safety facility is a building committee under Massachusetts law that would direct the project, the construction and design of just the public safety building. And what you're paying for with that appropriation is actually design documents that would relate to that specific facility. And you heard Sue Sullivan and Alan Proll talk earlier about how you ballpark the cost that it takes to actually build out the architectural drawings and permitting requirements and all of the technicalities that go into constructing municipal buildings. So that pot of money does that job. The pot of money for the senior center, similarly, under the direction of that committee, will focus on the renovation of Town Hall, including the reconfiguration of the space currently occupied by the Police Department. The reason that appropriation is a little bit more is because we actually will get bid or construction documents at the conclusion of that study period. This study, and for those of you who are veterans of town meeting, you know, this is our favorite thing to do, is study things. This particular study is another initiative that I want to say has been kicking around for at least a decade, and that is, what do we own and how do we use it, and are we maximizing the efficiency across the school side and the municipal side? So under state law, the schools have steward and control and custody of all of the school facilities, and on the municipal side, we have similar authority and control over the municipal side. So this study, one of the things I think is actually exciting about this is, this study says, where do we own altogether, and how do we best use it altogether? And are there pieces of buildings that might be used for a function that has outgrown its space, say, at Town Hall in one of the school buildings? So to me, this is, again, an effort to kind of level set where we are and what we own and how we use it, and how can we be most efficient in utilizing your assets. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Is there further discussion on the recommendation under Article 24? Yes, sir. Microphone seven.
Hello, I'm Tom Donley from Manatee Road in town. And just a question on Article 24. This is going to be a point in time, but will it be a living, will it be a living document, or is it going to be a one-time project as we go through each year? Or is it going to be a one-time project as we go through each year, will be updated?
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, can you speak to that?
I think I should have my own personal windscreen. You know, I think this is designed to be the first step. And I think as we begin to utilize it, it will live as we incrementally address the issues that arise as part of the study. So I think this is really inventory-taking, space utilization. It will give us a sense of, you know, again, how we're using what we're using. And then, to your point, I think as we construct new facilities or as we change uses in facilities, those changes would be reflected in the report of the study. We would continue to update that. But we would, we also view it as a planning document to be able to move forward. And also a document that we can, we can be, as Julie said, more nimble and more responsive to space needs as they arrive during the year. So yes, it will be a living document. To me, it's an important foundational document for the town to just assess, you know, where it is today.
Thank you. Are there additional voters who wish to speak to the recommended motion under Article 24? Yes. And to microphone eight.
Lizzie Eldridge, 154 Union Street. Given what Mrs. Johnson just told us, has anybody ever considered us having a building committee who is in constant movement of addressing all the issues of our buildings and our resources and how we're using them and how we might better use them in the future?
Thank you, Dr. Eldridge.
Lizzie, I think you've been one of the people that's been around for a decade thinking about this. So I appreciate the question. Again, I think this is the first step in deciding, now that we have the information that we have about all of the buildings that we own and how we're using them and what we might plan to do with them, then the question becomes, and I think it's responsive to this gentleman's point as well, then the question becomes, what do we do with this document? And as Mrs. Eldridge has pointed out, Dr. Eldridge has pointed out, the notion of having somebody, or some group that would oversee both municipal-side buildings and school-side buildings to be able to provide an umbrella in terms of planning and utilization of our facility, you know, may in fact be something that, you know, we bring back to you. But again, this is, I think, the first step of concerns that really have been floating around a decade or more. So thank you.
Is there further discussion? If not, we come to vote on the recommendation under Article 24, that the town appropriate an amount not in excess of $300,000 from available reserves for purpose of funding the independent review of existing municipal and school facilities, as more particularly said forth on page 53. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. A clear majority having voted in favor of the recommendation, the motion is adopted. Article 25 asks, will the town raise and appropriate, appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds, a sum of money to be expended by the selectmen to be used for the design, engineering services, and renovation of the Town Hall Data Center? You'll see that the article, the comment speaks to providing funds to renovate the IT department in Town Hall, which currently is currently a ten-by-23-foot closet on the third floor of Town Hall, which was adapted for use by town employees as a data center. This would provide funds to renovate that facility and reconfigure the space to meet all of the department's infrastructure and other requirements. Approve it because it doesn't involve borrowing, requires two-thirds of the meeting. The recommendation is that the town appropriate an amount not in excess of $296,000 to be expended for these purposes. Is there discussion? If not, we come to vote, requires for adoption two-thirds. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. That's a unanimous vote.
Article 27. Article 27 asks, it's at page 54, to determine whether the town will vote to amend the Town of Hingham's general bylaws. Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. My apologies. Page 54. I would have heard it from someone. Will the town raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds, a sum of money in the amount of $2,200,000 for the design and construction of a new maintenance facility for the South Shore Country Club, or act on anything related thereto? The comment begins, that the current maintenance facility is used, housed, rather, in an enclosed area which sits underneath the swimming pool, which we know has failed. And then it says down toward the 1, 2, 3, the third paragraph, while the town will advance funding for the design and construction of the building, the country club will be responsible for the total cost of the building. Revenue from golf operations are projected to be enough to enable the club to repay any borrowings.
For the South Shore Country Club, or act on anything related thereto? The comment begins, that the current maintenance facility is used, housed, rather, in an enclosed area which sits underneath the swimming pool, which we know has failed. And then it says down toward the 1, 2, 3, the third paragraph, while the town will advance funding for the design and construction of the building, the country club will be responsible for the total cost of the building. Revenue from golf operations are projected to be enough to enable the club to repay any borrowings that the town undertakes on behalf of the project. It requires for adoption a two-thirds majority of the meeting. The advisory committee and the select board voted unanimously in favor of adoption. Your recommended motion is at page 54, that the town appropriate an amount of up to $2.2 million for the design and construction of a new maintenance facility at the South Shore Country Club. Is there discussion on the recommendation under Article 26? Hearing them, we come to vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. Now we come to Article 27. Article 27 asks, will the town determine, to determine, rather, whether the town will vote to amend the Town of Hingham's general bylaws to add a new article, which would be called a tree preservation bylaw? And I'll just read the purpose clause. The intent of such a bylaw would be to encourage the preservation and protection of trees by designating specific activities during which trees must be protected and require mitigation for trees removed via replanting or collection of fees to support the town's tree planting and maintenance efforts. This is a bylaw that goes on for some pages and is in your warrant this year pursuant to a citizen petition. The selectmen had voted two to zero, it's on page 60, in favor of taking no action on this article, the question posed in the article. And the advisory committee had initially voted 10 to 3 in favor of no action. So the recommendation that is set forth in your warrant booklet is that no action be taken on this article. Now, I am informed that the proponent of the article wishes to offer an affirmative motion. I'll remind you of something that I'm sure you've pondered in the evening, the moderator's message on pages three and four of the warrant booklet, which speaks to when the advisory committee is making a no-action recommendation. That is what they call in town meeting parlance, a negative motion. And we're used to these negative motions, and we typically act on them here. We accept the recommendation of no action. Many communities, they don't go through the formal process of doing the vote. They just say, there's no action recommended, we take no action, they pass over it. When a voter, in this case, the proponent, Ms. Howell, when a voter wishes to make an affirmative motion, in substitute effectively for the negative motion, the voter puts that motion forth, and it will be received so long as it is seconded as the main motion before the meeting for consideration. Now, I have received an affirmative motion from the proponent, Priya Howell. And if she would come forward to one of the microphones.
I'm at mic five.
Mic five. Come in, mic five. Do you have a copy of the motion? Or I'd be happy to read it for your assistance in that of the meeting.
I have it. I can read it.
Sure. Why don't you go ahead?
That the town establish a tree preservation study committee, consisting of a chairperson and four additional members, all to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen for the purpose of considering the need for a new tree preservation bylaw, or to otherwise modify existing town bylaws for said purpose, subject to the following provisions. The committee shall report the results of its review to the Board of Selectmen. And if the committee wishes to recommend a new tree preservation bylaw or an amendment to existing town bylaws for said purpose, it shall prepare an article in time to present to the Board of Selectmen to request inclusion of said article into the 2021 annual Town Meeting warrant pursuant to Town of Hingham General Bylaws Article 2, if feasible, or if further consideration is necessary, to prepare an article for the 2022 annual Town Meeting in accordance with said procedure.
Procedure, huh? Now, you want to speak to why you were in favor of having a study committee establish, Ms. Howell, to consider this issue and to report that to the selectmen in time for consideration of an article at the 2021 annual Town Meeting, if that's feasible, or the 22 meeting, if 2021 is not feasible?
Yes. So, Priya Howell, 26 St. Pratt. I'm so sorry. I know it is so hot. And I hate making this drag on any longer. But I'm the lead proponent, and I didn't just wake up one day and think, hey, you know what would be fun? Let's bring a tree preservation bylaw. I brought this forward because I have had a significant amount of anxiety ever since we learned the compressor station was proposed to be put downwind of Hingham. And, you know, as a lawyer and a mother of four kids, some people, when they get anxious, they go for a run. When I get anxious, I spend a lot of time researching. And my research, you know, led me to looking up things like air quality and childhood asthma, and what can you do to improve air quality? I don't think I need to educate people here about the benefits of trees. They're numerous. The tree preservation bylaw I proposed was very limited in scope. It only applied on private property when people were undertaking major construction. Those are moments when people are generally engaged in making a profit. It's when you clear all the trees on a vacant lot to build a new structure. And while that person makes money from cutting down all those trees, we all pay the price by losing the benefit that those trees provided. So while I wish we were voting on the actual tree preservation bylaw, as Karen Johnson said earlier, our favorite thing is to study things. And I think that studying this and coming up with a tree preservation bylaw that has an appropriate scope, that everyone in town has had more time to think about and consider, is the second-best thing that we can do. So I urge you to join me in supporting at least the formation of a committee so we can get some great volunteers thinking about what is the right thing for the town to do.
Thank you, Ms. Howell. Mr. Currie for the advisory committee, if it is on to this article.
Good afternoon. Bob Currie. I'm Chris Millane, the AdCom liaison to this article. And, Mr. Moderator, I, as liaison, can serve as the second for this motion, which most of the advisory committee supports. The original no-action recommendation by the advisory committee, which is printed in your warrant, was directed at the original content of the article, which requested the adoption of a general bylaw concerning tree preservation on private property under certain conditions. As stated in the comment, the advisory committee unanimously supported the establishment of a working group or committee to study the need for new or modified tree regulations in the town. As stated in the comment, the majority of the advisory committee viewed the establishment of such a committee as a discretionary matter for the selectmen, and the minority thought it should be mandatory. We were given the opportunity to review the draft that went through a number of iterations, which forms the present affirmative motion. And the advisory committee this morning voted in support of the affirmative motion by a vote of 12 to 0 with two abstentions. So the advisory committee supports the adoption by this meeting of the affirmative motion. Thank you, Mr. Currie.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Currie. Is there further discussion? Yes, sir. Microphone two.
Robert D. Eaton, 19 Ocean View Drive, Hingham. I'm standing here because we're talking about trees. And on October the 25th, 1996, an employee of Hingham, a young man by the name of Matt Hibberty, fell out of a tree and was killed while performing his duties. And as a result, there was a lovely plaque that was established on Planters Field Lane in his memory. The sad thing is that today, that plaque, which was put up in front of a tree, has no tree. I just would like to bring that to the attention of the town. Could you please plant a tree by Matt's memorial? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there further discussion on the matter before the meeting, which is the affirmative motion to establish a study committee, as Ms. Howell has outlined and Mr. Currie has seconded? If not, we come to vote on it. Oh, number eight, I'm sorry. I have to keep looking to the left.
Anita Papucci Ryan, 37 Baker Hill Drive. I'm here to endorse this warrant article and remind the town that I think it is desperately needed. I live in a subdivision where the three lots next to me, the first thing they did was cut every single tree on the lot. There were beautiful cedars, beautiful maple trees that had been there for years. And the first thing the developers did was cut them all. I think we need this tree bylaw. While I'm glad it's a study, I would be more excited if we were voting on the actual bylaw. But I look forward to being able to do so at a future meeting. Thank you.
Unless there's further discussion, we'll vote on the recommended motion under 27. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? The ayes clearly have a majority. It carries, adopted Article 28. Article 28 and 29 are quite similar. Article 28 asks, will the town approve an agreement for payment and lieu of taxation beginning in fiscal year 2020, that's this fiscal year, between TGC, Roman III, Massachusetts Perforo Operating LLC, for the solar project located at the MBTA Montasket Junction Station? This comes with the unanimous recommendation of advisory and the selectmen. The recommended motions are page 60, which is entirely consistent with the article for a project that would be for this fiscal year pursuant to an agreement entered into on July the 1st, 2019. Is there discussion? If not, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Article 29 is quite similar. It just relates to the facility at West Hingham, 24th Hill Street. Asks, will the town approve an agreement with that same entity for fiscal 2020 for the pilot program payment and lieu of taxation for the solar project located at the MBTA's West Hingham Station, 24th Hill Street? Is there discussion? Hearing them, we come to vote. All those, please say aye in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? It's unanimous vote. Article 30. Article 30 asks, will the town grant the Hingham Cemetery Corporation permission to use for burial an approximately 2,470 square foot parcel of land, a budding existing land of the cemetery corporation, located at the rear of the property at 24 South Street? So as the comment makes clear, the article asks the town to promote the Hingham Cemetery Corporation to use for burial purposes, the donated parcel of budding the Hingham Cemetery that the owner, Jonathan L. Bavere of 24 South Street, has agreed to donate for the cemetery's use. The town's permission is required because of a specific section of Massachusetts general law cited in the comment. The advisory committee and the Board of Selectmen have voted unanimously in support of this article. The text of the recommended motion is set forth at pages 61 and 62 of your booklets. Is there discussion? If not, we come to vote. Requires a simple majority, all those in favor of the recommended motion, please say aye. Any opposed? Unanimous vote. We now come to a series of zoning articles, beginning at Article 31. These require for their adoption two-thirds because zoning bylaws require for adoption two-thirds. Article 31, will the town amend the zoning bylaw the Town of Hingham adopted in March 10, 1941? As follows, I'll just abstract a piece of the comment to set the stage. The article proposes limited amendments to the site plan review provisions of the zoning bylaws. Section Roman IV B6 of the bylaw identifies projects subject to site plan review, while Section III establishes procedures, standards of review, and related administrative matters. The article would make conforming changes to the town's zoning bylaw. They are set forth at page 63. As previously stated, approval of this article requires a two-thirds vote of this body. The planning board and advisory have voted unanimously in support of the article. Is there discussion? Hearing none, we come to vote. All those in favor of the recommendation under Article 31, please say aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous vote. 32, another zoning article, asks, will the town adopt the zoning bylaw change, set forth at Article 32? It's a conforming change. I'll read the part of the comment to set it. The planning board seeks to amend Section Roman III G of the town's zoning bylaw which pertains to the downtown Hingham Overlay District. The purpose of the district is to promote and protect the viability and value of business and residential properties located in the downtown district in a manner consistent with Hingham's historic character. The article qualifies requirements for mixed-use commercial residential buildings in the district and specifies the amount and location of commercial use that must be provided in such projects. The recommendation comes to you with the support unanimously given of the planning board and the advisory committee. This requires for adoption a two-thirds vote of the meeting. Is there discussion on the recommended motion under Article 32? Hearing none, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. It's unanimous vote. 33, another zoning article. The comment in the first part says, this article seeks to amend the Hingham zoning bylaw with respect to the abandonment or discontinuance of non-conforming, single-family and two-family dwellings. So this would make a change in the zoning bylaw with respect to such properties. Again, it requires for adoption a two-thirds vote of the meeting. And the proposed motion is at page 66 of the warrant booklet. The planning board and the zoning board of appeals have unanimously approved this article. The advisory committee has voted unanimously in support of the article. It is before you now. It requires for adoption a two-thirds vote in favor. Is there discussion on the recommended motion under Article 33? I'm sorry. I'm flipping now. I'm sorry? Oh, number seven. I'm sorry, I didn't see. Yes, yes, yes. There you are waving frantically.
No, I'm not frantic at all. My name's Gretchen Kinder. I live at 24 Grove Avenue. I'm looking for clarification on this. The language is somewhat obtuse, with all due respect. I'm trying to figure out what is being changed with this amendment or if we're just seeking a clarification.
Thank you.
The question comes because I'm concerned about previously non-conforming building dwellings, and particularly residential dwellings, being allowed to continue to non-conform, particularly in a neighborhood that mine which is very densely populated, and we have lots of big houses being built on very small plots of land, which is creating some problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Would Robin McGuire perhaps be the appropriate person to respond to this voter's question?
Thank you. In response to the question...
I'm not going to pull the mic down, okay?
Thank you. Robin McGuire for Cypress Circle. In response to the question, this is a clarification of the zoning bylaw. It is not a substantial change. It's basically to make the language of the bylaw more readable, and it will not allow what I think you just asked about, which is the reestablishment of non-conforming structures with additions. So to the extent that somebody is proposing to reestablish a non-conforming structure that has been abandoned, that will be allowed only to the extent that the extension or alteration would conform with the bylaw.
Thank you, Ms. McGuire. Does that respond to the voter's question? Thank you. Is there anything else on this particular article? If not, we come to vote. Requires for adoption two-thirds. All those in favor of the recommended motion under Article 33, please say aye. Any opposed? Majority clearly is more than two-thirds, it's adopted. Article 34 asks again for a proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw of the Town of Hingham. This would have related to FEMA MAPS, the Federal Emergency Management Agency. This would have been asking you to make certain changes in compliance with new FEMA MAPS, which new FEMA MAPS don't exist. So consequently, while the planning board and the advisory committee had voted unanimously in support of the article as revised, given that the MAPS have not been furnished, the recommendation now is one of no action. Is there any anyone wants to promote affirmative action and perhaps make up FEMA MAPS on the fly? If not, we'll vote on the recommendation of no action. All those in favor of taking no action on Article 34, please say aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous, recommendation of no action. Article 35, will the town transfer a sum of money from the receipts reserved for appropriation fund insurance recovery in excess of $150,000 for use by the school department? It makes clear what the law is, that this requires action of town meeting for the allocation or expenditure of insurance recovery in excess of $150,000, and it relates to the May 2019 fire at the high school. It is recommended that the town transfer $439,747.25, which is the amount of the settlement, from the receipts reserved for appropriation fund in excess of $150,000 to be used by the school department. Is there any kind of discussion on that one? If not, we come to vote on the recommendation. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous vote. Article 36, is similar. Will the town transfer a sum of money from the receipts reserved for appropriation fund colon insurance recovery in excess of $150,000 for use by the school committee? This relates to the water damage sustained in August of 2019 at the East School. The recommendation is set forth in your booklet at 68. Let the town transfer $461,078.05 for use by the school department. Is there any discussion of the recommendation in Article 36? If not, we come to vote on it. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous vote. Article 37. Article 37 asks, will the town pursuant to Massachusetts General Law 82, Section 21, discontinue all or portions of that portion of the public way known as Old Derby Street as shown on the reference plan? The comment states as follows. This article will discontinue the use as a public way of two portions of Old Derby Street. Would authorize but not require the Board of Selectmen to dispose of all or any portion of the discontinued area. This requires for adoption two-thirds because it requires or involves, rather, the disposition of real estate. The advisory committee, the Board of Selectmen, and the planning board voted unanimously in favor of the recommendation under this article, which is set forth at page 69. Is there discussion? If not, we come to vote. Requires for... I'm sorry?
Number seven.
Ah, number seven. Moving up to the Mickey Mantle microphone. I'm sorry. Hi, Rush Hoot, 438 Irish Street. I was curious why it's set for a minimum price of a dollar when it's assessed for a lot more than a dollar. Susan Murphy, winner state counsel to the town. Could you address Mr. Hoot's question?
Susan Murphy, 11 Daley Road. In connection with the discontinuance of the road, the road is not actually an assessed parcel. None of the public ways in the town are assessed. If anyone's familiar with Old Derby Street, where it is adjacent to Best Chevrolet and Descend the Diamonds, it was reconfigured at the cost of the Massachusetts Department of Transportation in order to put in a traffic light to increase the safety in that area. In doing so, it aligned the two portions of Old Derby Street where they are crossed by Derby Street, and that left a little spur of land that if you were gonna, if you're going straight towards the light, it's towards the left, towards Best Chevrolet. Those are not assessed parcels. Before they're disposed, there is a requirement that the town determine what the value of these parcels are. One is only about 5,000 square feet, the other one's only about 3,000 square feet. As I said, they're not separately assessed, but the assessor's office is determining what the value of them would be before the selectmen make a decision to dispose of them.
Thank you. Is there any further... Yes, sir.
Yeah, I guess it's just, I'm sorry, Rush.
Yes, yes.
438 Irish Street. The comment section in the first paragraph, you give a value, so that's what got me confused.
That is correct. Thank you for noting that in the comment. At the time that the warrant article is done, that the values had not yet been assessed by the assessor's office, and that information was not available until the advisory committee was doing the comment. But the Board of Selectmen will determine the value to convey them at, and that conversation has not yet happened at the Board of Selectmen meeting.
So that the purchase price that the gentleman is asking about is a minimum of $1, but could be materially higher?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Is there any further discussion on the recommendation under Article 37? If not, we come to vote. Requires for adoption two-thirds. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous vote. Come to Article 38. Article 38 is the traditional closer. Article 38, will the town authorize but not require the Board of Selectmen to accept grants of easements for streets, water, drainage, sewer, and utility purposes, or any public purpose, on terms and conditions the Board deems in the best interest of the town? The recommendation is that the town authorize but not require for a period through April 30, 2021, the Board of Selectmen to accept grants of easements and the like, according to the language I just read. This requires for adoption a simple majority. Is there discussion under the recommended motion under Article 38? If not, we come to vote. I'm not recommendation. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? No. That's a unanimous vote under Article 38. Before we disperse, a couple of quick observations. Again, a week from today, we have the town election. I implore you all to vote. We are not, of course, having the kind of voting opportunity at town hall that we traditionally have because of what's going on. In addition, I remind you again of the need for volunteers. The town welcomes volunteers. We critically need volunteers, particularly as we form additional study committees that require substantial work, expertise, and commitment. So I invite you to consider service to the town. It's quite fulfilling and critical to the well-being of our community. At this point, I would invite our outgoing board chair of the selectmen to offer a motion, if she so chooses, that the Hingham Annual Town Meeting of 2020 be dissolved. This motion requires a second and regrettably is not debatable. It requires for adoption a majority vote. Karen?
I move to adjourn the 2020 annual town meeting.
She moved to adjourn the 2020 annual town meeting. All in favor? Any opposed?